...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the board agenda. Another motion we approve the board agenda. Motion?
Second.
On favor? Agenda approved.
I wish you would roll call.
We will the next one.
Okay.
Approval of the consent agenda. Don't hang on, it's minutes from November. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second.
And I will do roll call. Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
Motion approved. Consent agenda approved. The next item is the first reading of our section six of our board policies. And there's several of them there. A lot of them, it says, just to maintain the current policy is recommended.
I don't know if we accept these on first reading.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Okay, and I will do roll call. Let's get this page over here. Okay, Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
And Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Section B is the section of deletions on first reading for section six. These are the ones that have been incorporated or are not relevant in another policy. Eleven of them.
I make a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
And I will do roll call. Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
And Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
Deletions are approved on first reading. Section C was the policy in section four, prayer and period of silence. And that's the one TSBA recommends that we keep in because even if it's not in policy, we still have to follow the law. And after what happened with our cheerleaders several years ago, I don't like it, but we really don't have a choice.
One thing I don't understand about that is Scott and you think still...
They...
What's the difference?
We've been picked on. They're watching us.
I know they've known that they've watched us.
I think they were going to put up a sign that they were contacting us.
Well, Bill told me that when they do it, that they do it before they video and all that, that they don't start the video.
Well, kind of like we do.
Well...
And I mean, that's what Anderson County was doing years ago. When I went over there to do the board review. Everybody just walked out, gave a prayer, and came back in.
Well, and that's what we, you know, we...
Yeah.
If we do it before we call the meeting to order, that is our time.
Yeah.
We can do that if we want.
Right.
And we've been doing that, and so...
And of course, now, as I said, the baccalaureate can't even be at the school is the reason it was moved to the church. So we're...
But I do follow. As far as me, I would really like for us to continue to meet, if we can at all, Tenth Hill?
Yeah.
And have our prayer.
Right.
Because I do think it's important, and I think that that's... I just would like for us to...
Well, it just sets the tone. And it's on our time, it's not...
Always get that sovereign God.
Yes. And it's not...
Drawing that grace.
Anytime during our regular meeting, it's, oh, we outside, and they can't tell us what we can and can't do in those minutes. Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve this policy on second reading? Four, eight, five.
I make that motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. And I will do roll call. Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
No.
Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
And Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, then we move into second reading of section five.
I make a motion we accept these on second reading.
Okay, motion? Second.
Okay, and I will do roll call. Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
And Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have three that were recommended for deletion. Here again, it's just like the other one. They're either incorporated into another policy or it's under a different name. Do I hear a motion that we approve the deletion of these three on second reading?
I make that motion we approve this deletion on the second... These deletions on the second reading.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
And I will do roll call. Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
And Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That takes care of our policies for tonight. The next item is permission to seek bids for water-cooled frozen yogurt machines. Food servers, okay.
I make a motion we accept the bid for the water-cooled frozen yogurt machines.
Okay, motion's been made to seek bids for yogurt machines?
Second.
Second. Do we have a grant for this? Do we get a grant for this?
Honestly, don't.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I don't want to say yes or no without...
One for each school?
I don't know the answer to that either, to be honest with you.
Three.
It was, it's for three. And I think it was for, it was in some of what they requested at some of the schools in their grade level, in the grade level meetings. I think some of the schools have requested. I think elementary was the only one that had it.
They had it, and it's amazing.
And some of the, I think, I think I think Kathy was like, when we get in some... Yeah. The school had asked, yeah, in the grade level summary in their meetings that they wanted in the middle of the house. So I think that they're, that they're silverware and can't go through.
Good investment.
Okay, and I will do roll call. Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
And Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Then the motion carries. We approve new frozen yogurt machines. Permission to accept bids for a walk-in freezer at Onida Elementary School.
I make a motion we accept that, or accept bids, excuse me.
Motion?
Second.
Second. And I will do roll call. Dr., or sorry, Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
And Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is University of Cumberland's memorandum of understanding. Here again, this is the standard.
Standard, sure.
It's the standard picture.
I make a motion we accept the M O U.
Second.
Motion second.
And I will do roll call. Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
And Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the agreement with the Gruman Group for Financial Procedures Technical Assistance. And this is the group that is double-checking the S R funds.
And this is actually the year two of this grant. We're not out any money for it. It came along with the S R funding. Basically, they just look at our financial procedures, our policies and everything, just make sure that everything, and it's really targeted toward the federal side of everything because of the S R funding. But it's just basically a policy and procedure review, and they provide suggestions on things that need to be updated. It's pretty much done. There were just a couple of things that they had to, we had to finish this year is really the only reason that we're having to carry it over for the second year.
Okay, very good. Long as it's not costing me, I'm recording. Do I hear a motion that we approve this Gruman Group services?
I make that motion we approve this service.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
And I will do roll call. Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
And Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the Tennessee Education Broadband Consortium. And this is a kind of a state thing.
They basically had, this is a pre-negotiated purchasing agreement for various equipment for internet provider. When we do switch internet providers, we will have to... Like, one thing that E N A provides that we don't, that we will have to provide in the future is content filtering. So we'll have to buy a server and things to handle that type of thing. But there will be some minor equipment that we do have to purchase when we switch to a new internet provider. This just gives us permission to purchase it through these negotiated prices without going through the bid process later.
Do I hear a motion that we approve this T E B C purchasing agreement for internet services supplies?
I make a motion we approve this T E B C purchasing agreement for our internet supplies.
Second.
Motion second.
I will do roll call. Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
And Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is field trip request for the sophomore and freshman class to attend the University of Cumberland's, to look at the campus and start looking for colleges. This has been a great, great, great project.
I make that motion.
Motion?
Second.
And I will do roll call. Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
And Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is boys soccer is selling hammy goodies cookies. Oh, boy. And the Beta Club cinnamon ornament sale. That's the only two fundraisers for this time. Boys soccer hammy goodie sale and Beta Club ornament sale. Do I hear a motion to approve these two fundraisers?
I make that motion to approve these fundraisers requests.
Motion?
Second.
And I will do roll call. Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
And Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next three letters of resignation, Alex Geisler, Skip Jones, and Brenda Burke. Do I hear a motion that we accept these three letters of resignation?
Reluctantly, I hate to lose any of those.
I do, too.
But I want to congratulate Skip on his new position. He probably had something to do with that. That's a pretty good deal.
He is, he will do great.
He will be great.
People don't realize how involved that position is.
It's tremendous.
It's a big responsibility, but he's, he will do really good.
Yes, I agree.
Do I hear a motion to approve these three letters of resignation?
I make that motion.
Motion?
Resignations.
Second.
Second. On favor? Motion carries. The next item is three leave of absence requests, Desiree Harper, Casey Bowling, and Stacy Barnes. Do I hear a motion that we approve these three? Motion?
I make that motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
And I will do roll call. Kevin Byrd?
Aye.
Dorothy Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Danny Cross?
Aye.
And Dr. Nancy Williamson?
Aye.
Motion carries. And that's all the business before the board. The only thing that, on the director's report, with two hires, Haley Carson and Ethan Schumaker, and then her, she included in her director's packet all the results of her leading grade level meetings.
Who's at the elementary right now?
I was just asking about Ethan Schumaker. I thought maybe coming back to...
I did not have an open spot at the current time. So right now, he's at the elementary as a teacher assistant. Possibly.
When you go to... Possibly. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy?
Our student of the month, I thought he was going to be here. The Inclusion Department, pick a student of the month, Trevor Strunk. Trevor is a good student who takes his coursework serious. He always makes sure his peers have their assignments turned in and helps them finish projects. Trevor always makes sure our rooms are clean and is a great organizer. He works within work-based learning, with the school enterprise, and he works. He can put together a project in a matter of minutes and deliver it in a timely manner. He helps the ladies in the office with UPS and FedEx deliveries. And anything that needs to be delivered to teachers. He worked at the O H S office during the summer with the Workforce Development Program and was very dependable and a good employee for us. They finish out saying that he'll make a very efficient future employee after he graduates. So congratulations to Trevor. As far as things going on around the school, we just finished up E O C testing today. We still have some makeups to do, but I want to say thank you to Melissa Cruz. She organized that, and that is a logistical nightmare to get everybody where they need to be. Calculators, other classes covered while we're testing, two people proctoring. It's a lot. So I just want to say thank you to all her work in doing that. And the teachers being willing to be flexible is great. We have the night of the arts going on tonight. There's also middle school games going on as well. So parking may be an issue, but that's happening at 6:30. We have the play coming up, the play that goes wrong, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Give you the times for that. And then basketball is in full swing. We had an amazing homecoming. I don't know if any of you were there, but it was a very special, one of the best homecomings I've ever seen at our school. Just lots of good things going on. Medic will be here on Monday for students or staff that want to donate blood, or any community member can stop by and do that as well. And then I have 12 through the 14th semester. Oh, the semester tests are the 12 through the 14th semester. What the heck is that? So that is it. We're trying to just finish out the semester strong. We're a little worn out. That's always how it is this time of year, but our class is doing great. We're going to try to have a little fun with some Christmas stuff going on.
It's hard to believe the semestrory is over.
Yeah, from Thanksgiving, when Thanksgiving is over, it just is like a blink.
Really. First of all, Jordan said if she did not make it, to apologize to y'all that her kids had been all pumped at 5:00 o'clock, and she was in charge of it. All right, so on Friday, the 15th, at the middle school, we are doing our fine arts showcase at 1:00, which will be our middle school choir. And if you've seen snippets or anything from our Veterans Day program, they did phenomenal. There's eight of them, but they were very powerful and did a wonderful job. So Ms. Lao and Ms. Stevens have done...
Did you say one?
Yes. They've done great with them. So you'll get to hear our choir. You'll get to see our drama department participate in that, as well as our Dead Poets Society. So they're going to come together and do theirs, which I think will be fun. And then we're going to have a Christmas party after that. I think Stacy said we've got a ballgame going on tonight. If you can come up, and we're just down to the wire. I need some of you to come Monday to decorate our life-size gingerbread houses you can climb in on. So we chose to go big, go home. So Jason's already got his ready to go. He said he's going to be inside, is if y'all want to come home.
Yeah, and you will walk through school. Our teachers have like went way, way over the top with our door decorations this year. Like, I don't know what's going on with him, but they are like, I mean, it's like a full-on display. So they're competing. I don't even know who, that was not me who organized that, but it's...
It's kind of like walking through the school and seeing what's like done. One thing that we're not going to do, and I was glad that said that they were going to do semester exams. We have chosen not to do semester exams at the middle school because we are giving them nine-week assessments to make sure, monitor the progress of how we're doing as far as standards and making sure we're covering our standards. So we chose instead of doing a semester exam to cover the first and second nine weeks, that we're going to use our semester exams, or our nine-week exams. So we did one the first nine weeks and got that data back and looked at it, and it broke it down to standards. The teachers felt like it was more beneficial than us waiting until Christmas and doing one. So when we come back from Christmas break, they'll give the second nine weeks one. And then we also have to give N W E A. So we are trying to cut out so much testing. But the testing that we're doing, we're trying to make sure that it is truly beneficial and that the data we get is quality data and stuff that we can use. So Mr. Brown has approved the middle school to have progress learning for this remainder of the school year, which we've worked with for the past, my teachers have been using it for the past couple of months. It is completely 100% state-aligned to the Tennessee state standards in all subjects. So we were able to get science, social studies, math, and reading. And as you know, science and so, or science and social studies are two that we never get that are state-aligned, they're nationally normed, any kind of benchmark that we get. So this is, so we're going to use that and try that for the remainder of the year and see how that helps. And I'll just be honest, my social studies teachers were the ones that got out there and started digging and said, hey, everybody has something but us. What can we use? So they worked really hard at that in our leadership groups to find something. And they came across this, and I think Mr. Denise May came across it, and Selena came across it. So we just, we piloted it for a while. They gave me a pilot, and the teachers love it. So we're going to try it and make their life a little easier because we can give that... They pick the questions. The teachers actually go in and pick the standard that they're teaching, pick the questions that they want. It goes all the way from a D O K three to a one, so they can vary those questions with them. They could do contrastive response. So we think it'll be a good thing to have. So we're excited about that, and we'll do that when we come back from Christmas break.
That sounds great. I've never been a fan of semester tests. I would rather test them at the end of whatever's being taught and then move on and review if they need help in any area. Give them help and move on.
And that's what we found when we did the nine weeks assessment. Those kids, that hadn't mastered the standards that we should have by then. We're able to have those conversations with those kids now and do those small routes and be able to, and move all the other kids on and keep going, so...
Very good. I'm anxious to hear how that works out.
I'm excited. Try it, and it'll take a little bit off their plate, too, because they won't have to grade it.
Right. Very good. Melinda?
My report is lengthy, so I will just hit the highlights. I thank each of you that are talking. It, health services reports. Keep in mind that this month in November was a three-week school month. During the month of November, the school nurses saw 1,358 individuals in the clinics. They also saw 34 staff members in the school's clinics. They administered a total of 423 oral medications and 71 injections and made 62 referrals to other healthcare. We finally got the contract finalized for the A R P grant. It is good to go. This is the nurse grant that will provide clinics into 2026. It is worth $483,775. The Safe Schools Report gives you a list of all of the items and projects that we've been working on for school safety and security with the Public School Safety Grant that totaled $55,513.06. The only project that we have left to finish up will be done by Christmas, Jason tells me, and definitely by New Year's, is the preschool facility that has a vestibule. We are going to install five intercom video doorbells, and we will also have the vestibule video doorbell installed for the cage so that they can buzz people in and out. Sean West and I, and also Brooke Claiborne, attended the National Rural Education Conference and did a presentation on our program for vaping, and it was highly successful. We are also featured in a newsletter through the University of Tennessee Office of Public Health. You can find that article in your packet. I gave everybody a copy of that. It tells a little bit about our district and what we do and how the program works. School social work updates. Ms. Baird did seven suicide safety plans for the month of November. And 60 mental health check-ins. And 60 C S referrals. On a lighter note, Family Resource has distributed $7,758.15 for the month of November. That was our Thanksgiving meals, furniture, food, clothing. We served 141 students during the month of November. Incoming donations and supplies given to the Family Resource Center was $9,167.47. That included a $7,000 grant that we got through East Tennessee Foundation. I'd also like to thank Ms. Melissa Cruz, who successfully made the Onida High School Student Government food drive. Without her, we wouldn't have had these wonderful meals to give out to 31 different families this past month. And also, they raised money, and they bought the turkeys for the Christmas meals that we're getting ready to give out on Tuesday. So New Salem Baptist Church provided these big boxes with all the sides, and then the high school bought the turkeys. And then the grant brought, the East Tennessee Foundation grant was, we were able to purchase 74, gifts for 74 children in our district, Christmas presents. And so that pickup will be on Tuesday. Families will be picking up their Christmas gifts and their meals. It was definitely a team effort there. We'd also like to thank the, all of Branch Ministry. They provided shoeboxes for each child down at the elementary school worth an average of about $30, some even more. This year, our holiday grants and in-kind support for Christmas holiday was $33,587. We were very thankful for that. That is all I have.
I apologize that I did not bring the totals from the food drive. I think you were close to 4,000. Do you, do you know how much we did raising at the high school? Maybe one... Yeah, I think it was close to 4,000. I'm sorry, I forgot that total. I totally forgot about that.
And both high school kids at Student Government, they came down and they brought all those canned goods.
Yeah, plus, we had canned goods.
And then they sorted it for us. And all we had to do was just fix up the boxes and go around the tables, and it was done within two hours. I mean, I was so thankful that they came down and helped.
It was fantastic. It's a good experience, too.
Yes.
Do you ever get anything from Second Harvest?
Yes. We actually, we, our food backpack program is through Second Harvest. And also, when families pick up their meals on Tuesday and their turkeys, Second Harvest is bringing them a box of produce to go with it. So we're really excited about that.
Second Harvest, anything that's donated today is doubled.
Oh, really?
And you can donate till midnight online.
I did not know that.
And there, last year, I forget how, how much was donated, but...
They've been a wonderful hard make...
Just today, December 7th, it's doubled.
They helped us the hundreds.
I knew I'd send that truck up here, and I figured you got some things from...
Yes, we've got some things. We've got more things coming to you, Dee, and you all are welcome to come out and be here when we get it out or help give it out or whatever. It's such a blessing.
Thank you. On a really good note, some of you remember Tara Phillips. She graduated here, she graduated from college in 2013, so probably, what, 2009 or so? But she was named the Moorestown West High School Teacher of the Year. And then she went on and was named the Hamlin County High School Teacher of the Year in math. She was part of the very first Vols teach class at UT where they, they convinced it down and got their math and science teachers out in four years with their degree and put them in the classroom. They still did their internship. It's been a very successful program for math and science. And she was one of the, she was in the first class that did that. So she's got a high, high, high reputation over in Hamlin County and Moorestown. Will, that's Maggie and Gary's daughter that I used to work with, Maggie? Yeah. I was so pleased when I heard that because I was on the school in D team and about to go into her class, and she, she's just, she's an actress. Very, very good. Okay, is there anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Motion.